Admiral, radar shows that we have liberals approaching at 3 o'clock and libertarians at 9 o'clock and conservatives at 6 o'clock. They're coming from every angle, every viewpoint.
All right. Hey, Green Bay. This is Elliot and this is Political Radar Green Bay and we're continuing talking to our Green Bay School Board candidates. Today we have Eric Van Enhoel. Hey Eric.
Hey Elliot, thanks for having me.
Yeah, of course. Thanks for being here. Sorry I was late. Jacob will never let me forget that. I'll never live that down now. So how would you like to get started? I have things I can ask you, but you came with some sheets of paper.
No, this is just notes in case I forget anything from some other things or points that I want to make sure we hit. So it's your show.
Cool. No, eh, it's Green Bay's show. Yeah. So what made you decide to do this?
Yeah, so I am born and raised in Green Bay. I've been in the community my whole life and I care a lot about it. And I was raised to get involved and to try to make your community better. That's always been an important part. My grandparents, grandfather was on a city council in his small town. So it's just sort of always been in my blood. Mom was a City of Green Bay police officer. So knowing how to try to make the community better, my background in public education and working with kids, I felt like this was a good cross-section of being able to help the city and being able to use my talents.
So, and do you have students in?
Yep. My kids are just starting in the district. My son's in 4K right now. My daughter will be in 4K next year. So that was another big piece of it is I'm starting to experience the school district from a parent's lens. And so felt like it was a good time to also jump in and get involved because my kids are just starting to go through the.
So what's your take on where things are at?
Well, I think there's things to celebrate and I think there's things that we need to drive change and promote to be better. And you know, so I want to kind of be a candidate who can do both of those things. To celebrate our successes and to be a champion for public education and also to recognize, hey, let's think outside the box and look for ways that we can do things differently and do things better. And I hope that I can find that common balance and I'm sure it's going to look different when it comes to different issues. But really who I want to try to be is both of those people.
That sounded like a politician answer.
Well, let's dig into it. I can expand on it if it was a little, you know, if we talk about a specific.
So like, what are some things you think are going right? Let's, you know?
Well, yeah, I think that the school district has done a great job of looking towards innovation in certain areas. You know, my son attends the Oak Learning Center, the nature-based 4K program at the Wildlife Sanctuary. And I think that's a tremendous example of thinking outside the box and creating a program that other people, you know, outlying districts and outlying communities are saying, hey, I want that opportunity for my kids. You know, you look at the NEW Charter School that's opening or John Dewey, there's the engineering track, the fine arts track. I mean, we've done some things that you would maybe classify as outside of the box or innovative approaches to education. And so I think we need to continue to look at that and make sure that they're, those options are open and available to all learners. But I think that's one thing that I'd applaud the district for.
Man, I just go negative right away. So, but we have, we have people leaving the district though.
Yeah.
So like, how do you resolve those things? We have, you know, these, you're saying that there's innovation, but people wouldn't given the choice, go to DePere.
Yeah. So I think that that's multifaceted and I'd want to know, you know, hear more of those stories. One example that I would point to, and this is one where I have some experience in talking to people about why they're leaving the district. And it's not necessarily popular when you're talking about education, but sports is a big thing for a lot of kids and families. And if I have a child who, you know, is a great basketball player, I may look at the opportunities that are available at a school like Bayport or DePere where they've got bigger and better facilities. They've got a track record of teams that have performed better going to the state tournament. And maybe my child is a part of a better basketball team. Now, we just had Green Bay Southwest with some success this year. But you know, that's the first time since 2001 that they've been that successful. So if I'm a family where sports are important to me, I may look to open and roll my kids to another district because some of the outlying districts put more into those resources. The Green Bay School District does not have athletic directors in any of their high schools. It's a position that's been cut and combined as an administrative position. Now, I understand why the Green Bay District has maybe made some of those choices. And I'm not saying we need to put more money into athletics, but if families are saying, I'm choosing to go to these other districts because of sports, and again, just one small example, you know, that's something that we have to take into consideration because where are we going to put our resources? If we put them towards athletics, you're going to receive a lot of criticism. But if you don't put them towards athletics and people leave, you're receiving criticism that people are leaving the district. So you can't have it both ways and we need to examine, again, just one small example of why some people may be leaving. I want to find out why other people are doing that and maybe some of it is perception. Do we need to market the district better? I can tell you a lot of people, when I say my son goes to the Wildlife Sanctuary, they said, I didn't know there was a school there.
Well, we pay somebody to do marketing. So I hope when you say we need to market it better, that you're not saying we need to spend more money on marketing because that worries me. So the, so the sports thing is super interesting to me because what people say and what they do are often very different things, right? So, you know, so if we would survey people, oh, why did you decide to go to DePere? Why did you decide to go to Bayport? They may say, well, you know, superior education. They may say those things, right? But maybe it was sports and we don't know that, right? So like, that's a very difficult thing. So, and I appreciate that. And you know, I don't, contrary to what many people in education may say, I don't think we overspend on sports. Lombardi Middle School for many years did not have a football team. People that do not live in Green Bay did not believe me when I said that out loud.
Sure.
Okay, so, and my kids went to Lombardi and it was insane. Like that didn't make any sense to me. So a couple of other things that kind of came to mind through that. So is there, you know, so those are some things that, you know, you started off with things that are going right. And I right away went negative, but what are some things you think are things we could work on?
Yeah. So I mean, I think one of the biggest things is the culture and climate that just surrounds public education in general. And that's not an issue that's unique to the Green Bay School District. It's really an entire state thing. Having worked in another district and choosing to leave public education, I can give you my own reasons as to why I chose to do that. And you know.
What does that, what does that mean?
I worked in public schools. So I was a teacher and elementary principal, and then I took a job in a nonprofit. So I left working for, so I'm one of those people when they talk about people are leaving, we're having a hard time retaining our teachers. I was one of those, those people. So.
Good.
You know, I see that as being, being an issue that we need to face. And so we need to recognize that as a school district that we need to try to improve that culture. Now, part of that can be paying people more money. Sure, we'd like to pay people more money and have better benefits and all of those things. But we also know we're dealing with limited resources. So what else can we do to impact culture and climate, to show our staff that they're valued, to make Green Bay a place that people want to work? Because now they can move around to different school districts. They can choose to go to work in DePere or Howard Swamaco. And, or people can choose to come and work in Green Bay. So what are we doing to make Green Bay the destination where the best teachers say, I want to work in that school district? And so I think that's one thing that we need to look at and examine and try to recruit the best.
So how do you think we can do that?
Well, you know, one, this is a small idea, but one thing that I think we can take a look at is time off right now. So teachers get, and I don't know if this applies to all employee groups, but I do know that it applies to teachers, that teachers get 10 days off that they can take during the year. Now, two of those are classified as personal days and eight of them are sick days. So two days you can take off for whatever you want to do and you can get your personal days off. But eight days you have to be sick or your child has to be sick. Or maybe a close family member that you can call in sick for. So if you have a major commitment or something and you're not sick, you know, are you going to, you either got to call in and lie and say, I'm sick today. I can't come in. And are they going to catch you? Are they going to verify that? That's not treating people like professionals. To force them to have to lie if they really need a day off for this, that, or the other thing. So if we were to just classify and say, you know what, you get 10 PTO days, personal time off, and whatever that means to you, if you need, you want to take a vacation in October, or you want to stay home and work on your landscaping, or whatever that might be, you get 10 days a year. Something small like that, I think would be a big climate changer. It would say, hey, you know what? Thank you for treating me like a professional. I appreciate that. I don't know what that means for substitute teachers. So we'd have to dive into that issue a little bit about how it would impact the district. But something like that as an example, I think would make teachers feel more valued and wouldn't necessarily cost the district a lot of resources. And that, again, one small idea that we can say.
Well, would because they would use them, right?
Yeah. I mean, do you incentivize though and say, hey, if you don't use them, you can roll them over? And, and maybe that helps with early retirement. Can you put them to your, you know, your 401K, your retirement?
In some fashion.
Yeah, right, right. And so, and now, right, what happens in the system now is if you don't use your days, they roll over. And then that can help you with early retirement. It can, you know, benefit in some way. So you wouldn't lose them. And again, we would want to work with all the different employee groups and understand how this would impact. But something along those lines, I think, would help to improve the climate of the district. And I know they're doing similar things in other districts too.
Trying to be devil's advocate. I agree that we should treat professionals like professionals.
Yeah, yeah.
So what do you think about administration?
So yeah, I mean, there's a lot of talk around, you know, what's happening at DOB and the extra positions that exist? And we can save so much money there. To be honest, and I haven't found anybody who can show me the org chart. I mean, what positions do we have at the district office and what job responsibilities do they have? So having heard this a lot, that's one thing that I want to dive into if I'm a school board member is the first thing that we need to do is define the work, like what needs to get done? What are the job duties and what are the responsibilities? And then let's design an organization that supports that work. And if we can align those two things without looking at like the current faces, we just take all that out of it. Let's define the work. Let's create an organization to support the work that needs to be done. Then we can easily defend it and say, there is, here's the work. Here are the people that do it. You want to see the job descriptions? I don't know anybody who has seen those positions. So if we do all of that and we say, gosh, we've got four extra people over here who don't have a box to line up to. Yeah, well, then it's, it's pretty tough to defend and say, oh, there's too many extra positions. So that would be one thing that I would want to do because I can't speak to one way or the other if there's too much administration or there's not. I've heard that there is. And so I want to know that for myself.
The thing is, we're supposed to be teaching our children, our students, our young adults, how to be prepared for this century. And, you know, just this morning on Facebook, I replied to Rhonda, who's also on the school board. And, you know, we're hiring clerical positions in the offices. And in the rest of the world, I mean, in the rest of the United States anyway, but I mean, really the rest of the world also. We're not, that's not happening. We're automating those types of positions more and more. We're getting rid of those positions. Those are not positions that are going to be careers. I don't know why we're hiring people like that at all. We should be removing those positions, not adding.
Sure.
And if it's a temporary thing for three months because we have a finite project and we just need some extra hands and then this is going to be made more efficient, that is not what I'm hearing though.
Yeah. I would add that, you know, the clerical alongside my other theory, like let's identify, you know, who the positions are, what support do they need and how else can we get that done? So again, I can't blindly say we don't need this, 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 and this, because I don't understand the work that needs to be done. And some of that is dictated by DPI. The other thing that I view as the key role of administration, the purpose of having a district office building and people who oversee the types of things is that we've got an entire school district that we need to ensure that the education, some kind of an umbrella to make sure that the education that you get if you go to Nicolay is the same, same quality that if you go to Fort Howard or you go to Lombardi. We want to make sure that we've got some consistency so that we don't have good education in parts of town and bad education in others. And so that's the overall responsibility of some of those positions is to ensure that quality that that's what's, what's happening in one side of town is the same in the other. So, you know, that's the ultimate goal and the purpose of it. I want to make sure, you know, are things making sense?
Um, right.
And clerical would be included in that.
Right. But so isn't that the purpose of some of these staff days that where, you know, teachers are working, but the students have off? I mean, isn't that what they're doing?
Well, I think that's all about professional development, about training and learning about new things. So, but yeah, taking a look at some of those things. What's interesting about when kids are off and teachers are there, we heard last night at the school meeting, they did a presentation on truancy. When kids are absent, why they're not coming to school and half days for professional development, we found it apparently really impacting truancy. Kids are saying, well, it's only a half day of school. Maybe it's a transportation barrier. I'm not going. That's, that's time in the classroom that we're losing out on. So, you know, something else that we need to look at around how.
As parents, those are ridiculous.
Yeah, they're tough.
I don't understand how that ever became a thing. How do you plan a schedule around random, oh, well, now it's a different time today?
Sure.
I never understood that.
Yeah. So I mean, that's another, another thing that we need to take a look at. How are we developing our staff?
Yeah.
And what works best for.
Days off that aren't holidays at all is super weird. You know, if other people don't have off, it's super hard for a working family to accommodate.
One of the things that I'll say that I know is happening is, you know, people always say, well, teachers have off all summer. The amount of professional development and learning that takes place in the summer for our, for our teaching staff is from my perspective and what I've seen is really increasing. And the notion that teachers have off from the middle of June until the end of August, I think is archaic. Knowing the amount of time and energy and effort that they're putting in during the.
Yeah, that doesn't, I don't think that concerns most people. Like that's the job.
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah. I'm just saying that we've got to, we can't just do our professional development during the summer. So we've got to find a way to do it during the school year, but it's going to have an impact on kids and on families. So, you know, something's got to give there, but maybe we're not doing it the best.
Well, I mean, you know, I think somebody with some fresh eyes and, you know, and maybe you were part of the system before. You know, I don't know how far removed from the system you are, but like, you know, somebody that from the outside can not blow things up, but you know, can really, I hate the word, think out of the box, but, but can do that a little bit. So, you know, I got an email from a friend that outlined some positions that there's a list. I'll shoot this to you. I just got it today, that has a bunch of positions that could be eliminated.
Okay.
And this was from somebody in the district and I won't out who the person was because I don't know that that's my place to do that. But these are positions in the district, administrative positions. And I won't pick and choose because there's a number of them that could be crossed out and I don't want to like out anybody in particular, right? But, but there's a number of things that are, you know, not principles, but there are things that could be knocked out that just don't need to be there. And these are, you know, $100,000 a year jobs. And I agree. I don't, I, you know, we're talking about, well, you know, we're talking about time off for teachers and then we're talking about like somebody pulling in a hundred grand a year. And we don't, we don't even know if they need that job.
Well, yeah, I mean, and without, without seeing the list, I mean, I can give you a list of positions and you can look at the titles and say, why do we need that? So the secondary part of that and the thing that I need to do is what is that person doing? What's their job responsibilities?
I think it should be the other way around.
Well, sure. Absolutely. Let's define the work, right?
Right.
Yeah. Here's a list of all the work that needs to be, get done.
Right.
And now let's create job descriptions. Let's create boxes on the org chart to get that work done.
Yeah.
And then once we've got that, we can identify and say, this is why we need this position. Because they're doing this, 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 and this. And some of that is by DPI and this person is supporting all of these positions. And then when somebody says, we can cut administrative, we've got a bunch of fat up there and we can show them some documents. Because right now, that's the part of the conversation I'm not seeing. I'm hearing from a lot of people that, you know, we need to cut positions. These are $100,000 positions. What are they doing? Here's a list of the titles. Okay, that's all fair. How do I respond to that as a school board member and to say, well, you know, position A, you listed this as something that gets cut, but actually that position does these 10 things. Some of these were required by law. Some of these are providing services here. I can't do that right now. And so that, that's why that argument keeps coming up and no response to it.
I, you know, you might have to break the law because, because honestly, we're losing students, which means money. And we, we need to retain our teachers. These, all, all executive positions are optional, all of them. Teachers are not optional. So if, if somebody's telling me that these are required by law, then they're going to have to, you know, arrest our school board because, you know, we need people that are advocates for our taxpayers. And by the way, our taxes are going up in the City of Green Bay to pay for our roads. So the taxpayers are getting squeezed.
True.
So you're not going to be able to just say, well, we're just going to increase taxes. And there's limits to how much you can do that anyway.
Yeah.
So even if you, even if you could, you can't. You can only do it so much, right? So, so there are going to be some tough decisions. So, you know, and I don't want to put you on the spot as to how you would do that, but like, I don't know if you want the job, if you.
The number of people who have asked me in the last like three days, like, are you sure you want to do this?
Right.
It's a little bit late now to get out, out of the game. But no, the reason that I want to do this is because I've spent the last 20 years either in college, learning about how to best serve kids and youth development, working in public schools or working in a youth-serving nonprofit. And so I've, I don't have all the answers, but I've got a lot of background and knowledge on this topic. And so I want to listen to people. I want to hear what their thoughts, processes are and use that to guide my decision-making. So.
So, so something that I asked previously was, so we're going to be getting a new superintendent? And that'll, you know, if you're elected, that will happen on your watch. So tell me about your thoughts on that.
Yeah. So I mean, a really exciting time to think outside the box, your favorite phrase. But no, it's a really good opportunity to kind of hit the refresh button, to kind of take a look at the entire system and bring somebody in who's going to bring a fresh set of eyes. You know, like I said, I think Michelle has done some really great things for the district and bringing some of this innovation. And I think that we're ready for somebody else to come in and to take a different approach. And so one of the characteristics that I've been looking for in a new superintendent is their appetite for change. Their appetite to say, I'm willing to have a discussion around the way education is structured, the education system, not necessarily the school district, although that's a part of it, but to say, why are we, why are we doing things the way that we've always done them? What can we think outside the box? And some of that's going to be some difficult conversations just as a, as a community, right? Is our community ready to say, well, that's not the way I learned in school. Well, this is the way we're going to do it going in, you know, quarter or a fifth of the way into the 21st century. We're going to do things differently now. And is our community going to, in our school board and our administration going to be supportive and working behind that? So I'm looking for a transformational leader, somebody who's going to come in and say, you know, I'm, I'm ready to take this school district in a direction, maybe that it hasn't gone before, or to take this a little bit of innovation that we've done and extend it further so that it's not just happening in little pockets around the city, but what kind of innovation are we, are we promoting in other areas?
So can we get somebody from Green Bay instead of somebody from Minnesota or Massachusetts?
Possibly. I mean, I don't know where the best candidate will come from, but what I want.
I mean, that would be definitely like the main thing, right?
Yeah. I mean, I want somebody.
That's the most important thing. They're part of our community though.
I want the best candidate.
But that would be the best. Like that's the most important thing, isn't it? Somebody with strong management skills that's from the area.
I mean, that, that could be. I want the person who has the strongest management skills, who has a vision and a direction and a passion and an investment in our community. Now, I'm from, I'm born and raised in Green Bay. That doesn't make me the, the best school board candidate just because I've been here my entire life.
Yeah.
So I think that we may have.
See, now you're not being a good politician. Oh, man.
So much to learn.
We got to work on you.
You know, I, yeah, I mean, there could be somebody in Green Bay, but I don't think that that's my number one characteristic. I'm not going to look at all the applications and say, okay, these two people from Green Bay, they go to the top of the list. I want the best candidate who's going to have a vision for our district and who is going to have a willingness to change. And if that person lives in Russia right now, maybe that's a bad example.
That's a terrible example.
I want, I want the best, I want the best person. And if they can be from Green Bay and be from our community.
So what would, what would your criteria be though? How would you determine what you think is the best person?
I want somebody who has demonstrated the willingness to change and think outside the box. The person, the person who has shown me that they can make tough decisions, that they're, they're willing to come in with a fresh set of eyes and willing to lead change, maybe in a direction.
What if I said I wanted to do it?
Come on in, let's interview.
Okay. But I mean, I don't.
Okay, okay.
But I mean, like what would, in all seriousness, like what would be like some reasonable criteria that we would look at? If we're truly trying to be outside the box. Because what, what we look at now is we want somebody with a PhD in education. I don't know why that matters. It's a management position. And, and we hire somebody from another district and these people just jump from district to district, just moving up the scale. And they're not tied to the community. And that breaks my heart because I am tied to the community, you're tied to the community, and these are our kids. And we want the best for them. We're not just hiring mercenaries to, to, to take a job. We want people that are invested. And yeah, they don't have to be from the community, but boy, they really have to bring something. And it can't just be that they worked in another, in another district to me.
Sure.
So, you know, I don't know what, what those things are to you and I don't.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, yeah, I said the, the biggest thing is that that willingness to lead change, right? Through that process. So that doesn't necessarily have to be innovation change. They didn't have to have taken a school district in another state and made them better. It could be anywhere. And I think we need to look into that. Now, again, we go back to what laws are in place from DPI that says, you have to.
Break the law.
Do you have to have a, you know, I don't know if you have to have a PhD. There is a higher level program to get your superintendent's license and whether that's a PhD track or just a, you know, licensure track. That would be the next step in, you know, in my education after having my masters. Not something that I was ever interested in.
Yeah, I'd like to know why.
Yeah.
Because what's the education requirement for President of the United States? You know, why, you know, you know what I'm saying? And I don't know.
I mean, that's, that opens up a bigger can of worms though, because as.
Or governor.
Yeah, sure. As you, as you talk about the rules that are in place or the laws that are in place, a lot of this is set by the Department of Public Instruction.
Sure.
And we're being forced to jump through hoops that are in place that maybe we don't necessarily agree with. Or we want to think outside the box. Now, there, there was legislation passed a few years ago, something called districts of innovation that allows school districts to apply for kind of this ability to think outside the box and do things. Now, to my knowledge, not a lot of districts have utilized this.
Yeah.
But that could be at our disposal to say, we know this law is in place or this is the regulation, but we're going to, under this districts of innovation, we're going to, we're not going to do that.
Well, our costs are going up, our students are going down, our good teachers are going down. I don't know what the criteria is for something like that, but if it's not that, I'd like to know what it is.
It's interesting when you talk about the students going down because this is another thing that I talk a lot about. The thing that we use to measure our kids right now is how they do on standardized.
I mean, the number of students.
Oh, the number of students are going down. Right.
Yeah. The, the, the graduation rates and the tests, the, you know, the score taking and all that. I mean, there are issues there too.
Sure, yeah.
So I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 no problem.
So, but that, that does kind of lead into the Washington Middle School and kind of the discussion that we had at the, at the forum the other night. That, you know, I feel like it was a little bit poorly asked, some of those questions. But, but you know, the idea there is that the, some of the schools in Green Bay receive poor marks. And, you know, we, we do have an educational system. We give students, you know, we, we rate our students, we give them grades. We deserve to be graded. Our school system deserves to be graded. Some of those grades are poor. There needs to be some accountability. We can say, well, it's not fair. Well, I mean, it's the system we have. If we don't think it's fair, then we need to get in front of that and say why it's not fair. And we need to try to change that. And we need to explain why it's not fair. And we need to say what we think our scores are and why. We're not doing that. And, and the thing is, I can speak 100% anecdotally with, from specific examples, my own brother, who happens to be a substitute teacher, not with Green Bay. And I share this with the other candidates, substitute teacher, not hired by Green Bay because he listed, you know, some people as references. And apparently people that are listed as references can't call them back. They have to call them. And it's a bunch of crazy bureaucratic nonsense. And all the surrounding districts, he can, he can substitute teach out of all of them, but not Green Bay. But we have a teacher shortage. So every time I see that in the press, cause that, I lose my mind. So, but anyway, he's moving to DePere or he has moved to DePere. Because, you know, he and his girlfriend, you know, they want to have some kids and, you know, five years out, they're like, well, do we want to be in the West High School District or do we want to be in DePere? So, you know, they, they look at the, the ratings that are on the real estate sites. And whatever ratings they're using, those are the ratings that people see. We can say they're not fair, but those are the ones that, those are what people use. So, you know, what do we do about that?
Yeah. I mean, this is where what happens in the school district has certainly an impact on the community, right? I mean, if we want to talk about growing Green Bay, people who are, have a choice to, where to buy a house. You think about if you got brought in to work for a corporation or a company in our city, you're going to say, well, I could live in Pulaski and commute in, or I could buy a house. or I could buy a house in the Green Bay West District. Let's go in and they do the same process. So that happens all the time. The thing that I would point to when you're comparing Green Bay to some of these outlying districts, the, the one thing that really separates us is poverty. Right? So I mean, we, we look at the poverty numbers in the Green Bay school district and we look at any of the outlying districts and it, it's a vast, vast difference. We've got schools in Green Bay with a hundred percent poverty. So we know that some of the things that are associated with that, um, you know, looking at Alice reports from the United Way, things of that nature. Our kids are coming into our district in some situations where they're below a, a, a certain standard. You know, we've got some kids who are coming into kindergarten who are struggling how to hold a crayon or a pencil. So if you say the standard at the end of kindergarten is kids need to be reading at, you know, this level. But when this kid is coming in, we're trying to get them how to, you know, the right way to hold a book. Or we're looking at how to hold a pencil versus some of these outlying districts where kids are coming in at, you know, maybe already knowing how to read. Or, or maybe, you know, having an environment where their, their parents enforced, uh, you know, reading before bedtime or something of that nature. Again, I don't want to paint with a stereotype, but that is the vast difference. So if you want to say the Green Bay schools are failing, we're not starting at the same level. Our kids are growing, but maybe not meeting the same level. But that's because we're not starting at the same level. We're, we're dealing with different challenges. We heard from our social workers last night and the things that they're dealing with where a mom doesn't have transportation. She's got a three-year-old and a, a newborn and trying to get to her kindergartner to school, but it's negative 25 and they have to walk because busing's not provided. It's not an issue that some of these outlying districts are dealing with, or at least not at, at the same numbers. And so you can look at Green Bay and say, well, Green Bay's scores aren't high. Well, they're not high on math and reading tests. So if we're going to gauge our success, because again, I agree with accountability, but if we're going to say, I'm going to see which school district is doing better based upon how well kids in general do on math and reading tests. We're never going to be at those levels because we don't have a population of kids that are, have the same experiences that they have in DePere or they have in Hardswold.
So why even have schools? Because quite honestly, our competition isn't DePere. Our competition is China and India. And if we don't, if we're not going to graduate kids that can read and can do basic math, why are we even?
So what's, what's the alternative?
I mean, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah. I mean, so we've got to take kids where they're at and that's the beauty of public schools. Because what happens in China is if a kid comes into kindergarten and they have a learning disability, you just don't go to school anymore.
Okay.
So, so they're, they're, they're done and okay, go, go do something else. We're not worried about you. We want to educate the smart kids. And if we were to do that, there, there's a really interesting book called Catching Up or Leading the Way. And if you're interested, I can lend you a copy. But it's, it's about how, you know, education in that part of the country is looking at the United States saying, we want to create more well-rounded kids and we want to provide services to everybody. And over here, we're saying, why can't we be more like China? Well, it, we're comparing apples to oranges. So one of the things that I want to look at is how can we continue to, to measure our success? Because when I sit down and talk to employers, they're not saying they're looking for employees who are, are really good at math and mastered algebra. They want people who can collaborate with one another, who can problem solve, who can hold each other accountable, who can just show up on time. Because they can teach them to run, run the machines or to, to do some of these other projects that, that they're looking for. They're, they're looking for good people who can come in and interact with one another. But, but it's hard to measure that, right? How do you, how well do you collaborate with others?
Pretty well.
A seven?
So you know why though? Because I don't put my, my workplace on lockdown every day. You know, these schools are put on lockdown and just the feeling of that, uh, every day is not a good feeling. And it wasn't on lockdown when I went to school.
No.
And, uh, yeah, I know there have been some gun issues across the country. Not that many ultimately. And most of them were done by the kids. So I don't know what lockdown does anyway. But it makes me as a parent uncomfortable going to school and having to, uh, when I put a, uh, post out on Facebook, hey, uh, I teach out at UWGB and I would like to collaborate with the Green Bay Public Schools on computer science. And one of the first responses was, oh, do you have a current background check on file? That does not instill a lot of, uh, not confidence, but enthusiasm.
Sure.
In, in with, from people. And, and then, uh, when, you know, kids are, kids communicate, kids communicate all the time with other kids. What do we do? We take their phones away. I, that, that drives me insane. You know, instead of using the, they have super computers in their pockets. We, we say, leave your phones up front. We're going to use pencil and paper to do antiquated math or do antiquated, whatever it is they're doing because they're not learning math. That is very frustrating to me. So we have 21st century problems. We have kids that are eager to learn, eager to communicate, eager to do 21st century things. I don't think we're doing the job.
Well, if you look at the, the overall structure, I mean, the overall structure of, of education, it's largely remained unchanged since the early 1900s, right? So everybody who's born between September and June of one year, all goes into a classroom.
True.
At, at one time and all those kids learn together. And when you're done, you go to the next room. And I mean, it's the industrial revolution.
Yes.
So until you get done with the assembly line and you're 18 years old and now go off. That's, that's not working anymore. And, and we certainly, you know, I, I mentioned innovation. We look for innovation, but it's, it's like rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. So, so we look for ways to do, do things differently and to try to bring in innovation. But at the end of the day, we're still working within the same structure. Or you go to elementary school and you go to middle school and you go to high school. And, and again, this isn't a, an indictment of Green Bay Public Schools. This is an education system throughout our country that largely remains unchanged. We start in September and we end in June. Every piece of evidence says that that's not the way learning happens. You don't study for nine months and then take three months off.
Yeah.
But that's the way our structure is in place. But this goes back to when I mentioned earlier about our society, our community. If we, if we came forward with a proposal that said, you know what? This goes to start times too. We know that our adolescents, especially in high school, they don't, their brains don't work at 7:30 in the morning. That's what, but we did, I know the Green Bay School District did a study on start times and said, what if we had high schoolers start at nine o'clock? Well, what about basketball practice? And, and what about, uh, this, that, and the other thing? And what about me going to work and what, how is this all going to? So eventually so many nasirs, there's so much pushback because we've always done it this way. We've always started at 7:30. Same thing with the school year. Hey, you know what? We're going to, we're going to have year-round school or we're going to try a, a changed calendar. We have a cabin up north. My family goes up north. I can't go to school in July because that's when we vacation here. Or my, you know, you'll, you'll hear it from employers. We need to hire summer help, hire summer help.
Sure.
So you can't have kids in school because then my business is going to be affected. Okay. Well, then we won't, we won't miss. So all of these things, we make decisions that aren't best for kids. There's other structures in our community, other norms that are in place that, that we don't change. But as a community, if we want to say, you need to do better, then we need to start to break some of these structures that have been in place for way too long. Because again, rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic isn't going to change the overall outcome. And, and I'm not trying to imply that the school district is sinking, but we're, we're beating our heads against the wall, trying to find different results. But yet we're still working in the same structure, the same room that we've always been in. And, and that's the kind of thing that we need to look at and try to change.
So I agree. I think the evidence is pretty clear about later start times, year-round school, these are better things for kids. So are you going to fight for those things?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we need to have those conversations and we need to, when somebody steps up and says, I don't like that because it's not good for me. I'm not on the school board to do what's best for, I, I have one group that I'm working for. What's good for our kids? Now you look at, you know, the, the common saying, what's good for kids is good for teachers and what's good for teachers is good for kids. So that's closely aligned and we know that it's a big system. But that at the end of the day has to be our driving force.
Right.
So yes, I, I think the answer is yes. Now, I'm not saying I'm running on a platform of year-round school. I'm not running on a platform of changing these start times. But when I'm presented with that evidence and, and we have our administration bring us a recommendation or proposal based upon the direction that we give them. And it's something that we believe strongly is good for kids, then we're going to find, I'm going to fight to find a way to make that happen.
Awesome. Let's leave it there. So election is April 2nd.
Yep.
April 3rd, if they're not going to vote for you.
Yes.
I'm just kidding. So April 2nd and, uh, this won't be out before the forum that's tomorrow, but, uh, there, there have been some forums. And, uh, how would people get in contact with you? You can take the.
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, Facebook page, EricForEducationGB, uh, my website, ericforeducation.com. Cell phone number, six, five, five, eight, nine, nine, three. My email address is Eric, the number four, education.com, uh, at write me.com. I, I truly am running on a campaign of, I want to talk and listen to, to, to people to understand what I'm advocating for. And understanding that I can't make everybody happy. If I do that, I'm in the wrong business. But I, I can make educated decisions, given my background, given the feedback that I get from other people. And then sitting at the board table, um, I, I feel like that's who I'm going to be. I want to be transparent and accessible to people.